Apologies.
Good evening, everybody. It's the usual preamble before meetings. This meeting has been recorded and will be uploaded to the Biddletown Council YouTube page. The aim is to make decision making should be tr- the aim is that decision making should be transparent and in the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound may be used for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Biddletown Council. Please view the guidance on recording and public meetings policy if you need more information. I'd just like to confirm at the start of the agenda that attendees will be named in the minutes unless otherwise instructed. We don't seem to have any external attendees at this moment in time. Uh, moving on to item forty-three on the agenda, public participation. Uh, I have got Staffordshire Police down. I did see a police person earlier on.
They're going to race out. They've gone to an emergency.
They raced in it, which is, which is unfortunate for some respects of you. councillor Jackson.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that the officer that we all the way I take it that's happened. But I was gonna sort of bring up tonight, there was a thing on Facebook about an incident or an alleged incident on Sainsbury's the other week. It caused an uproar in the town. It turns out the police have checked it out and it was fake. What I was gonna say was, well, I'm sure there must be some sort of offence, malicious communication or whatever. I just wondering, I was gonna ask whether the police are actually gonna investigate, because there must be some way of tracing it back to somebody. Because obviously somebody's gotta be a member of Biddlechatter to be, to contribute to. And if, if nothing else, just to fire a shot across the bows, uh, to people, this, this sort of thing is really irresponsible. I mean, you know, if you've got young children that were out around that time, you'd think, God, where, where are they? Uh, you know, it, it caused, I think it did cause a lot of discomfort in a lot of, a lot of areas. So just to try if we can sort of drop a note into the police and ask them if they are gonna investigate it. If they'd let us know, um, if we can, any sort of outcome whether the perpetrator has been talked to.
Thank you quite a lot there councillor Jackson. I mean, there's, there's two potential offences which spring to mind, and one is the malicious communications, uh, act. And the other one is, is the old one of wasting police time. You know, call, cause, calling police out to, uh, uh, something which doesn't act, doesn't actually exist and actually takes them away from doing the job which they should be doing. However, what it does, it feeds into the concerns which a lot of people have got about the antisocial behaviour which is prevalent within the town. And I was out with councillor, uh, Garvey last night and a, and a car came down wrong way through the one-way system, uh, straight down here. It's high speed, obviously completely ambivalent to the fact that there was, there was people around, people close to the pavement. So we have got, we have got an issue. Well, for people to actually compound that issue with false allegations, which, which creates uncertainty in the community is ju- is just not acceptable. It is a shame the police aren't here because there is a wider discussion to be had, both on that and, and obviously the other incidents. But, but we are where we are. Uh, moving on from public participation, I can't, I've got one other hand, which is councillor Rogers, if you'd like to make a, a comment, and then, then we will obviously move on because we've got nobody here to participate with, but.
He's quite right councillor Jackson. And the other one I was asking, all this CCTV coverage of people trying to our doors. Mine, and then finding those, that's the question I was getting asked. Thank you.
Uh, again councillor Rogers, that's something which specifically had down to raise because, you know, he's, uh, recording doorbells, he's ringing doorbells and similar. You know, there are quite a lot of, uh, certainly shall we say suspicious incidents going on. And, you know, the police need to be on top of it. So hopefully, I mean, this recording is in the public domain. I know that the, local newspaper do pick up on the recording. So obviously, uh, I can imagine if they reported, then they will look, uh, to get a comment off the police. And I would absolutely encourage that because if there's something as.
Serious as well, yeah.
Our role as a councillor is, is represented as a community and without police representation, we're unable to do that representation. So but one way or the other, we need to get that message across.
Yes, that's fine. Okay.
So moving, moving on on the agenda, item forty-four is apologies. Do we have any apologies?
Yep, lots of apologies tonight. So we've got councillor Salt, councillor Erdley, councillor Holdsworth, councillor Harper, councillor Brady, the heart, you said councillor Proudlove.
Right, councillor Proudlove later on, yes. So moving on to item forty-five, declarations of interest. Uh, item A to declare any disclosed, disclosable pecuniary interests or dispensations, or to declare any other disclosable interests. Got no hands showing, so we will move on. Item number forty-six on the agenda, to approve the minutes of the town council to have a proposer.
Okay.
And councillor Jones could have a second for those please. Councillor Jackson, we'll just go through the minutes later. Everything's okay. Present and attendance. Uh, public participation. Thirty-five to receive a presentation from Stoke-on-Trent Food Bank on current projects. Fifty-six apologies, thirty-seven declarations of interest, thirty-eight minutes, thirty-nine mess communications, forty standard agenda items, forty-one to receive updates on outside body meetings, forty-two councillor in finance. And that concluded the meeting. So if there are no comments to be raised, if we could have a show of hands to accept those minutes please. Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr Mayor, if I may.
Councillor Jones.
Uh, item thirty-nine on mess communications. This is by saying that the, we all agreed to discuss the, um, the hospital thing. It says all agreed. I did not agree. In fact, if you look at the recording, I all be quite, well, I all been against doing it. So I think that's wrong. That amendment, please.
Yes, we can do that amendment. I, I do accept that. It was proposed by councillor Jones with that amendment, which he said, and it was seconded by councillor Jackson.
Just to be clear for the watching people on YouTube, I have no, I did not dispute the importance of the item, just the, um, opposed to discuss on that night.
Except, uh, that is, that is noted.
You said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item forty-six. B, to receive the minutes of the recreation and amenities committee held on Tuesday, the eighth of October.
Move those please, Mr Mayor.
Uh, Pastor Parks, do we have a second for those minutes? Councillor Jones, uh, just go through them. Present, in attendance. Apologies and approval of any substitute members. Declarations of interest, previous minutes. Thirty-five to consider the town council highways priorities for the emerging couns- county council local transport plan. Thirty-six to consider establishing a tree network and a tree warden project in Biddle. Thirty-seven to discuss and confirm priorities for the old toilet block on Warford Car Park. Thirty-eight to consider a town council response to the prison, fire and crime commissioner consultation. Thirty-nine standing agenda item is the jobs for lencmen. And there was one confidential item. So if we're all happy with those minutes, could I please have a show of hands? That's taken unanimously. Thank you very much. Forty-six C to receive the minutes of the planning committee.
Minutes, chairman.
Goodbye councillor Garvey, do you have a second? Councillor Jackson, uh, going through the minutes, present, in attendance, apologies, declarations of interest, minutes from the previous meeting. Thirty standard agenda items to consider any proposed arts for local listing. Thirty-one to note feedback from the district council planning department in relation to inclusion of the neighbour planning, plan and planning decisions for Biddle. Thirty-two, new applications. Thirty-three supplementary applications and thirty-four new decisions and notices received by the district council. And item thirty-five appeals, there were no appeals. So if everybody's happy to receive those minutes, can I have a show of hands, please? Again, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item D to receive the minutes of the town and community committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fifteenth of October, two thousand and twenty-four.
In the show, I'd like to move those minutes.
Councillor Garvey's moved them. Could I have somebody to second those please? Councillor, councillor Jackson, yes, you were there. Uh, going through the minutes, present, in attendance, apologies. Apologies and approval of any substitute members, declarations of interest, minutes of the previous meeting. Receive a verbal update on the arts and culture and heritage discussion. To identify an alternative site for a cycle rack. To receive a verbal update on the Christmas lanterns project in partnership with a sign, Biddlethieth and Community Zone and the local Biddlepeoples Group. To receive a verbal update on the plans for the Christmas lights events in Biddle and on Biddlemore. Consider support for the Biddle rotary Santa activities. To receive verbal update on progress with the film activities. Establishing a separate Instagram page for those activities. A joint event with other Maulins locations and the foodie cinema showing. Going through to confirm the outcome of the library of things research and an application for a county councillor grant, its closes in December, two thousand and twenty-four. Going forward to confirm the launch of a Biddletown council newsletter in January, two thousand and twenty-five and consider content. Forty-five to receive a verbal update on two thousand and twenty-four events. If we're happy with those minutes, can I have a show of hands, please? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. And the final item is to E, to approve and sign the minutes of the finance strategy and management committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-second of October, two thousand and twenty-four.
Your first minute, please, Mr Mayor.
Approved by councillor Rogers. Do I have a second?
Mister.
Councillor, councillor Jones. So again, going through those minutes, present, in attendance, apologies and agreed substitutes, declarations of interest, sixty-one to receive a presentation from Prism in relation to cyber essentials. Sixty-two previous minutes, sixty-three accounts matters, sixty-four policy updates. Sixty-five standing agenda items. And then there were a number, number of confidential items on the agenda. We are happy to receive those. Uh, councillor Smith, sorry.
Yeah, just to say item sixty-one, um, the guy that was meant to be, uh, presenting to us wasn't able to come. Did we get any further with getting him to do the presentation again?
Not cool.
No, he's, he's coming this month. That's brilliant. It's all the way with childcare issues, but he's, well, he's hopeful that won't be the same.
Okay, okay. So with that caveat, can we have a show of hands accepting those? And it's. Hey, that's unanimous. Thanks very much. Just give me a couple of seconds longer to sign them. We shall work in this. Oh, moving on, gender item number forty-seven, mess communications. Well, I actually thought October was part of an event, wasn't it? Fairly honest. Um, there was a couple of notable happenings in, uh, uh, October. The principal one was on the eighteenth of October, which was the health and wellbeing fair, which was organised downstairs, which had an awful lot of volunteer groups and, and agencies with a whole plethora of offering support and advice to, uh, the residents of Biddle who, who called in. I think it was an absolutely brilliant event. To be perfectly honest, there was an awful lot of enthusiasm there. I think anybody, any of the residents who popped through the doors and visited, were, were quite enlightened. Uh, if, if only with the, uh, dancing ball exhibition on the, on the stage, which was, uh, which was, I think was, uh, universally and very well received, something I aspire to do in the future. It's something I'm aiming for, to be honest. Uh, so we, we shall see. But congratulations to the council staff for the organisation of that. I think it went ex- went extremely well. I, I did the usual planning to pop in for ten minutes just to show my face and ended up staying for over two hours. It was absolutely phenomenal, phenomenal event. And the other event of note is obviously we've just gone past the Remembrance, uh, weekend, which was Remembrance Sunday. And, and obviously the services that started off on Monday. Again, I think the town is absolutely proud. The turnout was phenomenal. And it was conducted in a proper deliberate, somber manner. And I think everybody who, who went there was thoroughly impressed with, again, the organisation and the service which followed it, the methods and stuff. I think it was a credit to the town. And, uh, a due credit to the people who've, who've served us. And, yeah, I can't compliment, I can't compliment enough. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend on Monday because of a medical appointment. But my deputy stepped forward and I've seen the video and collectively did an absolute sterling job. So very much for that. Thank you. That concludes for me. There are a number of events coming up with the Christmas season effectively starting. Somebody, councillor Jackson, are you?
Yeah, that was, uh, in your thanks, uh, I don't inadvertently, I'm sure. Obviously the, the job that our town try did as well, linking it with all, of all of the other people. There's the cement between the bricks.
Certainly is, yes.
Uh, so I didn't want to.
They wanted to see me miss by not mentioning them, but yes, I abso- absolutely agree. Yes. Yeah. Keeps us, keeps us all on track, to be honest. More ways than once. Thank you, John. And again, just to say that there's an awful lot starting to happen now with the, with the Christmas events, both the, uh, Christmas lights switch on on the thirtieth of November here and then the following week at Biddlemore, the Christmas lights switch on at, at Biddlemore. And then a number of events obviously happening within the town hall and in the churches. So watch this space effectively. Okay. So, so nothing else on that. Moving on, standard agenda items. Uh, agenda item A to receive an update on the management of town council assets. So over to the chief officer.
I don't, I haven't got much to say on that. Uh, Mr Mayor, uh, most of our discussions, um, are ongoing at the moment as regards kind of potential budgetary implications, uh, but they'll go to finance in a few weeks before coming back here.
Yeah.
Nothing to update at the moment.
Uh, B to receive an update on the health and safety activities, including any risk management concerned.
Uh, no concerns about that at all. We've, um, continued with our, um, statutory testing works where necessary. Um, the doors downstairs, for example, have been, uh, have had their annual service, so they're fine. Um, no, no reports to make you aware of. We've had our advisory since last meeting.
Okay, lovely. And finally, to receive an update on the Biddleworks Together projects.
Thank you. Yeah, we've got, um, the, uh, leaflet, the kind of A three leaflet that we had for last year. Um, that's, we're doing that again for twenty-four, twenty-five. There is a really lovely timetable of activities that people can get involved in as regards free food and warm spaces and places where they can go for support and activities, you know, opportunities to, to reduce isolation, make friends, that kind of thing. Um, so we're expecting them this week to be collected to go in the Biddle times. Um, so they'll be delivered starting from, uh, kind of Friday, Saturday, I think the team get out to do that. So that's, should be with everyone soon.
Okay. Any comments, councillor Jackson?
Yeah, just on the Biddleworks Together project, um, I would, when they, when this list comes out, I would recommend all councillors have a look at see, to see what this group are actually, well, this group of people are actually doing. Um, it really, really is from a, a, a very small acre, you know, an oak tree is starting to grow there. And the connections that people, somebody will say something in the meeting and, oh yeah, I can do that. And, oh yeah, that's good, that's a good bit of information for us. So it really works well together. And again, I'll say all the volunteers that are involved with that, you see a slap on the back. A slap on the back.
Completely agree. It's a super project. It really is. Uh, and it's, it's an example of what other town and parish councils could do. There's absolutely no doubt about that. And it is, and it is being recognised. It's certainly been recognised within, within the county. Uh, and I think it's starting to get traction a little bit further afield as well from what I hear. So, yeah, so it's excellent. Very good work there. Uh, item forty-nine to receive an update on any outside body meetings attended since the October twenty, twenty-four meeting. Have we got any updates or councillor Garvey?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just to report on the annual meeting of the fair, of the Biddle Fair Trade, um, group, um, they reported a, um, a reasonable surplus in their accounts, the preparation of a, a new banner to go at the back of the town hall. Um, and that the activities they supported this year going into schools and making, having awareness campaigns as well as the annual, uh, schools competition. And their intention to, um, support the fair trade fortnight in two thousand and twenty-five. Unsure of what the date is, it was moved this year to September, which was slightly less convenient in terms of the schools competitions. The hope is it will be back in March again, so we can, so they can do that. The one question that did come out of that to bring to this council was, um, they were very, um, enthusiastic about the ethical fair we held, whether we'll be holding another ethical fair. And if they are, they would like to be involved in that. So we have a, we know if the ethical fair will be, um, happening this year or this coming year.
Uh, we haven't done one this year, but we have done a couple of sessions with a group that, I can't remember what the group are that we signed clothes. Yeah, we've done some big clothes movement events this year where, um, people kind of pay a couple of quid for a bag and then fill up that bag. And so that's kind of been a, a nice way to, to reduce waste. Um, and that's the sort of thing we could include within an ethical fair, but we haven't, um, had one specifically branded as such.
If there was an intention to organise an ethical fair though in this coming year, then they would like to involve obviously the fair trade perspective. Thank you very much.
Lovely. No other outside bodies to report on? No. Uh, item fifty, to receive an update on the town hall frontis development and to approve actions. The first action is to confirm the tender process will commence on Monday, the eleventh of November, through Friday, the thirteenth of December, two thousand and twenty-four.
Yep.
Yep. Item B, to confirm an additional town council meeting will be called on Tuesday, seventeenth of December, to approve the successful contractor. So that's going to be a one item full council meeting on Tuesday, the seventeenth of December. Item C, to approve that contractors will be appointed in line with the town council's financial regulations. And item D, to confirm that the inscribed bricks will be purchased by the town council in advance of the commencement of the project due to the long lead in time. And if can just make, just say a little caveat on that.
You can. Just, has, has any, has everybody seen the sheet that was there? That's come from the architect today. So I've printed some out. They were about to wear the sounding things. I've forgotten.
Yeah. There's, there's two important things about item D, where it says to confirm that the inscribed bricks will be purchased by the town council in advance. Uh, there's two things. One, it means that if there are any delays in the manufacturing process, and there could well be because it's to do with scheduling, got to specialist manufacturer. Uh, then there won't be a case that the project is otherwise finished waiting for these bricks to arrive and then we can't finish and carry on what we're doing. But the other thing is, which was highlighted by the architect, it was quite pertinent, is that if we leave it to the con- the contractor who is successful in the tender process, they won't be able to order them until they've been awarded the contract, which is obviously quite a number of weeks, and that's quite a number of weeks within the lead time. And there is two aspects of the contractor owning the bricks. One is if that contractor goes out of business, then the bricks do not belong to the town council, so cannot be brought back and uh, given to another, uh, contractor to finish the project off or, or whatever. They will be held in limbo as an asset of the contractor at the want of the administrator or, or whatever. Uh, and the second thing is, is that most contractors would un- un- ordinarily and understand put a handling charge on top of them because they're doing the procurement process and whatever. So we, so it puts an extra margin on the price, which is a minor consideration because you wouldn't expect that to be much and they obviously will be handling the bricks anyway. Or it was just felt that because of the lead time and because of the risk off title of ownership, this was the best way forward to, where, secure the, secure those bricks in our possession as a town council in a timely manner to make sure that there's no delays in the project going ahead. Is that a fair sum, Chief Officer?
Absolutely. Uh, we're led to believe that the specialist provider of the bricks has at least a twelve-week lead in. So it, it could just, they could do with being ordered. Now that we've closed this, closed the scheme, um, there isn't really a, a reason to, to delay with that aspect of the project.
Councillor Garvey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, just a couple of questions on this. The, the item C to approve the contracts, do we need to have a formal proposal that we approve at this meeting? So do we need to vote on that as it's an approval? And secondly, do we actually need to have a proposer that we do proceed to, to purchase bricks in advance? That would be at the council's mission.
I, I, I would propose that they all under item fifty, that we take all four items on block for a, uh, approval at the end of the debate. Yeah. Councillor Hawley.
Coming back to the bricks, perhaps I'm a bit thick or what, but you've got down here, but the standard end grade, what? And the radial end grade, what, looking at this, what's the difference between the two? I, I, I can't see it on there, so.
The, the design of the memorial has a curved aspect, which is where the wheel goes on top. And it has two wings which are straight. So there are some bricks which have actually got a curved profile to fit the aspect underneath, underneath the memorial wheel. So you've, so you've got the miner's wheel. And then underneath, that's where, that's where a curved set of bricks go. And then, and then like the two wings to carry on either side.
So we'll have some of each.
Yes, yes.
It's all right. It's just sort of conceit from that.
No, no, I absolutely agree. We were a little bit concerned about the curvature. We wondered whether you're gonna have right-hand curves and left-hand curves, but it doesn't work like that. The, the curved bricks will be able to be fitted anywhere within the curve and they will look all right. I think councillor Jackson, you had, uh.
Yeah, yeah. First of all, I take it this story's not to scale.
Yeah.
Because we've got several old bricks and we've got spaces on that one anyway. That's one, just one little point. But I'd just point out, these are obviously the original bricks that we first chose. They were tiles. Uh, I don't know if everybody's aware of that. Uh, our current, um, design team have said they didn't like them uh, because they were bonded with a glue. And these were actually bricks that are integrable. And these bricks will also match the other brickwork that's going around, around the town hall. So it will, it will look a lot better. Um, and also, I mean, we do have money in our coffers for the people that have actually purchased the bricks anyway. So there shouldn't really be any, any, uh, costs for the town council on that one. Because if there is, we can draw it back, back down anyway, don't we not?
Yes, absolutely. So we've, so each brick, we've had a donation from the people who've completed those applications, um, of twenty-five pounds for each brick. Um, so we've held on to that, uh, funding obviously to, to, um, pay for the project. Um, but yes, we, we have also have an allocation of UK Shared Prosperity funding as well for this project. So there is, there is ground funding available for that.
Okay, councillor Smith, and then we'll close the debate and go for it. Are you okay? Okay, lovely. So could I have a proposer? Councillor Garvey, could I have a second please? Councillor Jackson, could I have a show of hands to approve? Excellent. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Well, did we mention we have sort of got a start date as well?
It's, it's not on the agenda. If every, if everything was.
Falls in place, we've got a start date early in July.
Yeah. So I think everybody's had the same email as regards that with, you know, with the sort of the hopeful dates. So, subject to agreement on the seventeenth of a, of a contractor, we hope to be on site in the first. hopeful dates, so subject to agreement on the seventeenth of a contractor, we hope to be on site in the first this week or so of January.
Councillor Smith.
I have just on the next slide.
Right, okay, yes, so the important thing about the date starting on within January is that it doesn't affect any of the Christmas displays, the Christmas lights switch on and movements around the town during Christmas time, which obviously is a benefit. Councillor Rogers, I'll bring this to the floor.
I mean, the tree is going where it normally goes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything is exactly as is, and we're starting winter in January and hopefully spring will bloom with a brand new frontage. All right, okay. Item number fifty one, to approve local government pay award for town council staff. And there is a supplementary document with the pay scales attached. Chief Officer.
I don't need to say anything about that, it's within our staff contracts that this is a kind of cost of living increase that's been backwards and forwards with the unions across who deal with all local governments.
It's a national negotiated.
Yeah.
Great, isn't it, councillor Smith?
Just to say, I'm not going to vote on that one because I'm subject to saying pay award, just.
Yeah, thank you.
We vote on it, obviously.
Okay, so can I have a proposer?
If I may.
Councillor Jones. Councillor Jackson.
Chair, could I just ask, that obviously anonymously, that we have an indication of the numbers of our staff that are in what particular band? I just think it'd be useful that we had some idea about how much our staff across the town council for the next twelve months. So obviously no names to editing, but you know, we've got one staff on spinal scale, whatever it might be, or yeah, so we've got that information as councillors as well. That'd be agreeable to.
That's the information you usually get at appraisal time, so when we approve successful, as they usually are round at appraisals, you get the grades that people are on then, but I can bring that back to you. Do you want that at finance?
Yes, yes.
It's a summary.
That'd be fine, thank you. I need a second, I've had a proposer. It's councillor Jackson, could I have a show of hands to accept that? Thank you, that's unanimous, noting councillor Smith's abstention because he's declared an interest. So moving on to accounts and finance, A, to approve the accounts paid in November, two thousand and twenty four. Expenditure over five hundred pounds. Expenditure less than five hundred pounds. And there is a supplementary sheet, which I think you've all had, which has got, again, further expenditure over five hundred pounds. And expenditure less than five hundred pounds. Councillor Harvey, Hawley.
I'll be Hawley. Do I look like?
You've got to pay them. Yeah, just a query, I presume that on the salaries, basically we were paying around sixteen K in October, it's twenty two K in November, is that because of the pay rise? But yeah, I mean, just I thought, hey, that's a jump.
Yeah, if, well, we have to back pay as well. From the start of April, so had you not approved the previous item, then I would have told you you can't approve that one.
So potentially then, what will the salaries be in December then? Have you got, that's obviously including all the back pay.
Yeah.
So how much is it?
Actually not dissimilar to what you usually pay, because by the time they've gone up a few pence an hour and then you've been taxed on it, it's. But I'll do you more of a breakdown for the finance committee and then you'll know what we can expect.
So if it's sixteen thousand to twenty two thousand, and it's got seven months back pay included, it's probably going about twenty two thousand seven. Sixteen thousand seven hundred, sixteen thousand eight hundred is next, that's fair. Yes, it's a good point to raise because it is a big jump, but it's because it's backdated till from April, so.
When I first saw it, then obviously.
Yes, when we started, which is really understandable, yes.
Wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
So we've got a proposer, we've got a second. Can we have a show of hands please to accept that?
We propose a second, I'm sorry.
It was proposed by councillor Jones, or seconded by councillor Jackson, I think. Unless I'm mistaken, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was. All right, okay, lovely. And confidential items, so I'd like to say at this stage, thank you for anybody who joined us to watch in, I hope you found it enlightening. Interesting as well as enlightening, and I hope to see you next time in the future, thank you very much. Thank you very much.